Seconded by John, any discussion on the motion, hearing or not? All in favor, opposed unanimous?
Oh, one abstention.
Note the abstention from Lena. We have no eighty-one Ps. We have a continued preliminary subdivision plan for Ariana Estates. Is that you, sir?
That is me. I have asked for an extension.
Certainly. We have a letter from the applicant asking for an extension to September fifth. Take a motion from Joe, seconded by Babe. Any discussion on the motion, hearing or not? All in favor, opposed unanimous? You have something you would like to give me?
I'd like to see this. It's a preliminary plan. Off of Central Street.
I have a preliminary plan for ten point one acre parcel located off of Central Street, near Beaver Street, from Grayson Builders. I have also received a check of the amount of nine hundred.
Excuse me, Pat.
Yes.
Is that continuance on the Fruit Street-Ariana continued?
To September fifth.
Till September fifth.
Yep, that was a preliminary discussion, Lena.
Yeah, oh, okay. Because we have some people here from that area.
Is there anyone here from the greater Fruit Street? Okay. We will not be hearing that tonight. The applicant has requested a continuance until September fifth.
Will we be notified?
No.
No, because again, it's a preliminary site plan. He has not submitted a definitive. So, obviously, if he moves forward in the future, you would then be notified in terms of a definitive. But certainly, you're free to come back September fifth if you so choose. Okay? Thank you. You're welcome. We now go into the continued public hearing application of F and D Central Realty Corp. For the special permit to construct Bear Hill Village. And we also go into the continued public hearing application for approval of Bear Hill Village definitive plan.
I've included in the packet a memo.
Would you like me to read the memo, Larry?
I can read through it, or you can read through it, whichever.
I'll do it quickly. From the town planner, he has reviewed the off-site costs associated with the Bear Hill Village PRD compared to those of the Walden Woods PRD, and can report the following. Walden Woods consisted of a hundred and ten units, fifty-five bonus, for a total of a hundred and sixty-five units. For their bonus density, they completed Phase Three Trail of the Milford Bike Path. Is that what it's formally called?
Yeah, Upper Charles Trail.
Upper Charles Row, thank you. In the amount of seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars, or thirteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollar bonus unit per building. Bear Hill PRD has ninety-eight units, forty-nine bonus, for a total of a hundred and forty-seven units. The bonus density that they're proposing is for ball fields for the amount of five hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight, or ten thousand, five sixty-six bonus units. It should be noted that the above costs reflect only those costs associated with off-site recreational improvements. Considering granting the density bonus, they do not include the costs associated with extending Casey Drive as a public street through the Bear Hill Village PRD development. And Larry, for just true transparency, I think this number does not, and correct me if I'm wrong, does not include potential road improvements from the new intersection up to Central?
Correct, it doesn't include any of the rest of it.
Okay. Nor does it include, because he referenced Casey Drive, but it doesn't include any road improvements that may occur, like I said, from Central Street down to the intersection and beyond.
Correct, it's just a direct comparison of rec to rec.
Okay.
But there's also distributed for you tonight, the top page is an email that Bob Poxon, engineer at G and H, had sent me, breaking down the costs for Casey Drive, the difference in Casey Drive
So additionally.
as a public versus private road, and the costs for Beaver Street North and Beaver Street South. So you've got three additional figures there that you may want to at least be able to take into consideration when you review it.
Well, let's be honest with one another. He references the estimated additional cost for Casey Drive subdivision road versus the condo road is three ninety-five.
Correct.
In terms of calculation, I appreciate what Bob's attempting to do, but obviously, if you don't complete the road, you can't put in your subdivision. So as much as I appreciate the three hundred and ninety-five, it's to the greater benefit of your subdivision that that road needs to occur. However, if we look at the estimated cost of improvements to Beaver from Maple to Central, obviously, at a hundred and twenty-seven, that's an additional added benefit slash value to the five seventeen. Then we have an estimated cost of the improvements on Beaver Street from Maple to the south, which again, is in terms of the, perhaps on the, airpin terrace. That's at a hundred and forty-eight. Again, I think some of his associated property is in that area. And I don't, again, I'm trying to be fair and equitable. And I think, to be fair and equitable, adding a hundred and twenty-seven to the five seventeen is genuine. Adding the one forty-eight and the three ninety-five to the five seventeen, I don't think, I think that's a matter of development cost more than is true added benefit cost to the town.
Right, if you do add that, the number comes out to thirteen one fifty-eight per unit, if you add that one twenty-seven.
I will grant you, and I do agree, that the one twenty-seven should be added to the five seventeen, and then divided to get the multiple. If the multiple is the thirteen thousand, as you just speculated, then I think you're within reasonable ballpark, just to be fair and equitable for this discussion.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure the board had all the costs.
No, 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 and again, I appreciate that. But like I said, in terms of the added benefit of them creating a road that they would need anyhow, and then the road improvements in association with where the subdivision, as much as it will benefit the town, it will clearly benefit the subdivision as well. So with that said, feel free, I have no other correspondence in front of me.
Okay, so for the record, my name's Peter Lavoy. I work with Gary Aaron Hellnon. I'm here tonight for Bob Poxon, who's the project engineer. He couldn't make it.
Arthritis.
So he had to go over the road improvements on Beaver Street. That was, that had come up at the last meeting. Since then, Bob has walked Beaver Street with Mike and some other people from the town to go over what they, you know, what they wanted for improvements. And that's what we have on the board, is basically the improvements that were worked out with Mike and Dominic. So I can go through.
Essentially, if you could just give a quick overview. I think we're talking about some points of that road, it was sixteen, six and a half feet wide.
Correct.
What are you proposing to make the road?
Twenty-two.
From Central down to that newly-created intersection?
Yeah, so you have Central Street right here. Beaver Street comes down. Maple is in this location. So from Central to Maple, the road is going to be widened around six feet on the, looks like the west side.
East.
East side.
North is up, remember? I know it's new to you.
If you look, it says right there.
On the east side, so. And the reason why we went on the east side is because of the topography. There are ledges, there is also utility poles on the west side. So that's why we went along that side over there. So that will be widened to twenty-two, all the way down to Maple. And then as you go.
That's still in the layout, but.
That'll be all still in the layout, correct. So then we come past Maple, and on the curve here, you can see in the pink, that's pavement outside of the right-of-way as well on this side here. So what we're doing is, we're going to kind of straighten that out and add pavement on this side and remove the pavement. But the roadway is still going to stay twenty-two feet wide. Right now, I think there's thirty-five feet of pavement in that one location.
Yeah, Peter, in that area, that whole stretch is going to twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay. Sorry, it's going to twenty-six in this location here. Then we come down to this other curve right here, which will be kind of smoothed out. They're going to remove the pavement on the east side, and they're going to add pavement on the west. And then, so this whole side, you know, will be increased in pavement. And that's.
So you're trying to lessen the curve?
Right, trying to lessen the curve because of the grade and stuff. I mean, these are preliminary sketches, but we would work it out, you know, we would engineer it once.
I think obviously, what you're looking at is a twenty-two foot improvement continuously from Central, and then making that at least a minimum, would you say twenty-six?
Twenty-six is what's shown, yeah.
So.
So twenty-six, I'll do it through Mike, including the next curve, or?
Yes. All the way down to the.
The improvement south of Maple and the new intersection, everything's twenty-six.
In fairness to Peter, he got stuck presenting it.
No, 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 and in an attempt to try to help him out, again, I just want to make sure that what he's just trying to sum up what he's capturing, which again, is a twenty-two foot road improvement, then a twenty-six. And again, with an attempt to try to straighten out curves that you're never going to straighten out, but.
Right, and then, once this is, once this work is done, the road will be within the right-of-way. Because right now, it is out of the right-of-way a little bit.
I can see it right here.
The half-size plans in front of you have the overall sheet first, but the individual segments are at a larger scale.
Bob gave a twenty scale. I have larger scale plans, if you wanted to get into the detail.
Yeah, I think what they've come up with is a major improvement, but the plan itself for the development still hasn't eliminated Teddy Road, which was one of the suggestions that I had had, and.
What road is that?
Teddy, the little stub road that goes out to Beaver. Second of the two that goes out to Beaver, that one.
This one?
So my suggestion was to eliminate that and relocate Koala to the north, so that it's more on the outside of the curve, more centered on that curvature to improve the line of sight, which would mean they would need to flip a building or two. Yeah, it's on the last page. And so I would still, I'd still maintain that those two changes ought to be incorporated into the plan by the time you see it next.
Mike, was there any mention of that in your discussions with Bob?
There wasn't a whole lot of discussions about that, but in some of the revisions and edits I sent back, I did mock that up. That way, it just didn't come back that way. But I think we can work through those technical things once we figure out if this is the course of action.
Okay.
Plan the board wants to take.
Peter, in terms of, let me back up for a second. Any questions from the board? In terms of the road improvements?
Mike, there's no drainage structures up there of any type, are there, off the side of the road?
I'm not a hundred percent sure where the drainage is. We didn't get that far into it, but we can certainly, or we will investigate that once.
Well, yeah, the only thing, if there are, is part of this. I mean, I don't have any issues with this, we just want to make sure that the drain, any move, any movement of drainage structures is included in the work.
Absolutely, yep.
I just don't remember if there was anything up there or not. There might be a head wall or something in the way, somewhere along the way. Can't think of anything else.
The only thing I know of is down here, I think. It might be a swale or a ditch down in this area here.
Yeah, it might have to be, you might have to play around with it in order to get it to work when you do the widening, that's all. I just.
Right, I mean, we would have to engineer it. This is just a preliminary sketch.
Peter, you're showing a sidewalk on both sides of Casey?
I think that was a holdover from several years ago.
I think the plans as submitted showed two sidewalks on Casey.
It looks like it if you look at.
One on each side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Obviously, you don't need two sidewalks, but are you showing any sidewalks in the interior of your subdivision that's going to lead people out to Casey?
This development here?
Any of them.
PRD, I don't, it doesn't look like there's.
Yeah, there's none, there's none shown within the layout of the condos, and if you want to call.
Again, I'm going to call this the Zane Ridge Rule. You will be putting sidewalks in. Specifically, that goes out to Casey. Again, I don't find a requirement to have a sidewalk on both sides of Casey. I think one is more than sufficient. But in other PRDs, there appears to be a problem in terms of not having sidewalk safety for kids to get out to the school bus, and then backing up traffic somehow within their subdivisions. You may also want to consider, as they did at Zane Ridge, is putting in some sort of.
Bus stop?
Stop, yeah. Because obviously, we know that the bus is not going to go into this, any of the roads of the PRD. So we're going to be looking for a safe access.
So that bus stop would have to be located at the end of the road, on Casey, close to Casey? Is that what you're saying?
I definitely think that you should be looking at an area that you're going to conjugate the kids. Where you pick it is entirely up to you. If you obviously do that, I think you have to look at the, you may want to then consider talking to the transportation coordinator in terms of how he would theoretically be picking up kids, whether he's going to be doing it on Beaver or just on Casey. And obviously, if he's not doing it on Beaver, you're going to have to think of a way to collect the kids as well on both sides.
Okay, I'll let Bob know.
Yeah, they may end up having two with that.
They very well may have one on each side when the school bus stops. Obviously, cars stop, and they get on the bus safely that way. Like I said, I'm going to call it the Zane Rule, Zane Ridge Rule, but.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I think internal, I mean, the only thing, to be honest, in terms of safety, I think you're looking at making sure you have a location where kids can congregate. I don't know that you want to pull off the bus, because that becomes a safety issue, because everybody decides they're going to go around the bus.
No, I wasn't looking to pull them off, I was more looking of a.
Congregation, every good.
That's all I was looking for. I was not looking for additional pullouts. I was not looking for, you know, having any.
Looking for a structure?
Not necessarily, no, just, I don't, let me put it to this way. A flat area that's grassed, that they can safely stand on, I think is sufficient. I don't think we're looking for, you know, you know, we're waiting for the T to pick us up. I don't think that's what we're looking for.
Okay.
I just think you need to have what I'm going to call a collection area, for the kids to safely stand and be able to have access to such an area. Again, let's be honest with one another. Unless it's part of your PRD, you're not going to be, you're not going to maintain it in terms of winter removal. So some area that the PRD ultimately is going to maintain is what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Given that this is a public meeting, is there any questions from the audience? Let me just finish. And before I call on you, just for the record, please identify your name and your address, sir.
Kevin Duffy, one twenty-six Beaver.
Did you say one twenty-six?
One two six.
One twenty-six, yes. Now, just a couple of quick questions. On where you're going to change Beaver. Showed up here, I understand up here, and I agree with that, it should be widened. Down here, how is that going to be done? Meaning, you're going to widen, you're going to take out the curb a little bit, and then you can have the whole thing. So how's that going to work? Because I'm right here.
Thank you, the middle one.
So, how's that going to work? I'm just asking.
Well, they're going to remove this pavement, and then they're going to, they're going to add this pavement here, but then they're going to pave it at twenty-six feet wide. And then they'll tie your driveway into that twenty-six foot wide.
Right, so, I mean, so, is it? Put it the right way.
It'll push the edge of the pavement.
If this is my driveway, then it goes out more? You understand what I'm saying?
In other words, they may be removing the asphalt that you see in front of you, replacing it with grass, extending your driveway to now meet the road, I think is what Peter's telling you.
So you'd be working out, not in, obviously.
Right.
He's not taking from you, if anything, you may add.
May gain a little bit, which would still be town road.
You may get one more, two, one or two pushes more of the lawn.
I'm just curious to how they're going to do it.
We've got rocks right there.
Yeah, we have rocks and stuff. I'm just, for my own.
No, that's fine, no. That, whatever, that would be grass.
Yeah, yeah, okay, and that would add, again, that's still be the town road, I understand that. And then, yeah, this is down here, which, yes, that should be done, I guess.
Again, you're never going to straighten the road, this is.
No, 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 you can't straighten, you can't straighten it totally. I understand that, and it's, it would be a lot of work to do that totally.
Yeah, you don't know it.
I'm not asking that anyway. And you do it up there, that's good. I guess the only other thing I would ask is, when you first started talking about whatever you were building, tying into, when you first started talking.
Peter wasn't the first one, so you may just turn and ask us the question, because Peter may not be able to answer it for you.
All right. I'm not sure, subdivision, I'm not sure, the first subdivision that was talked about.
What's the question, Kevin?
When we first started this meeting, he started, he started to talk, and I'm not sure what, when he was talking about, because it was off of Beaver.
He was talking about Ariana Estates, a whole different project.
It's continued, it's a totally different project.
So, is that anything to do with Beaver?
No, 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 that's not our Fruit Street.
That's all I was asking, that's all I was asking.
Different neighborhood.
Kind of not sure what that was about.
Yeah, yeah, don't worry about that one.
That's all I was asking.
As a matter of fact, after you, there's a over one on Whitewood, so that has nothing to do with you.
Yeah, I was just asking that to make sure, that's all.
No, 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 you're fine.
Lot of stuff going on.
That's why I said, I mean, that's why I said, sometimes it's easy to ask us.
We actually may kind of gain ground slightly, because you're, okay.
You're getting a little grass, or a rock.
Rock, all right. And that's all right, that's fine.
All right, thanks, Kevin.
That's all, thank you.
No, no, no problem. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Just come up so they can catch you on the microphone. Please. One ten Beaver.
The road you're going to widen is from Central to Maple.
Ronnie, set it to mic. Thanks. Yeah, I gave you.
Okay, the road you're going to widen is from Central to Maple, right? Correct, that's, yeah, that section. That's on the east side. Correct. So that's on the even-numbered side. Right? I guess, yes. And you're going to make the road six feet wider. And is there going to be land taken involved? No, it's all within the right-of-way. Well, I'm not really sure if it is.
It is, it is, it is.
All right, if you take down a stone wall, or a made stone wall, are you going to replace it? That will be part of the, we would have to design, I mean, I would think that they would go through and locate any stone wall, and if it, I think that they would relocate it at the right-of-way and construct it. All right, because part of. I don't know. Part of Beaver Street.
We're going to put a stone wall back that's in the right-of-way now, if we need the right-of-way to widen the road. There may be a stone wall put back, but it won't be in the same place necessarily. So that depends on the grade.
I don't think he was relocating, I think he was asking if it was going to be relocated. He wasn't going to ask to leave it in the, you can't leave it in the middle of the road. I don't think that's what he was asking to do.
Because I was, I was leading to, if it has to be taken down, because it's going to be in the roadway. Would they replace it? That will be part of the design, but I can't answer that question.
Well, I think the question is, because I don't believe there's any stone wall up there that needs to be a wall. I believe it's a stone wall that's field separation, so the grades on both sides are the same. Is there a grade difference due to the wall? Then something will have to be done in order to make it work.
That was my next question.
Yeah, no, that would, that would have to be, because they have no rights to enter the, enter your property. So if there's a grade difference, the only way they can make up the grade difference is to put a wall up.
Because if they make the road roughly five and a half feet wider in front of my house, they're going to be almost right up to the edge of the stone wall. And the road is probably going to be two and a half, three feet high, lower than the bottom of the stone wall.
They'd have to reconstruct the wall in order to be able to do it then. Now, they're, they're looking at the plans, and I don't know exactly where you are. I think that the five feet, or the five, six feet is variable. Because it depends on where, it depends on where you are, and the whole road isn't consistently eighteen feet, or whatever. So the intent is to make it twenty-two feet, whatever they need to do to do that at the end of the day. That may not mean that it's six feet in front of your property, I don't know. But in order to be able to do that, they would have to come up with something to be able to make that grade change. And if there's a wall there now, they would have to reconstruct it. The probability of that, and what would probably happen, what we'd have to do, if that's the case, is we probably would want to ask for an easement, because that wall needs to really get pushed back to the property line. The wall would need to be in your property, not in the town's property, is where we'd want to put the wall, is what I'm saying.
Well, I always kind of thought that wall was the land taking that the town used years back.
Well, they haven't finished the design yet, so.
Yeah, it's tough for us to say.
This is just preliminary.
Now, there's no plan for us for a sidewalk then, at all? No, we're not showing any sidewalk, no. All right. So the road towards Bellingham, on the other side of Maple Street, how wide is that going to be?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Just, just to there.
Right.
Just, just to there, after that, it stays at whatever it is.
And then, when they come past Maple, then it's going to go down, down to twenty-two?
Correct. The intent is still to make Maple.
Up from sixteen.
Make Maple the main street.
And twenty-two, you figure is going to be sufficient enough to carry all the extra traffic.
Well, again, as I said, the intent is to make Maple the main street. We're really not trying to take additional cars through there, and that's probably a better choice than trying to make it wider and have people do the shortcut instead of going around Maple Street.
Well, that might be what you'd like to happen, but I think human nature, the people are just going to take.
They do that now.
Right.
And unfortunately, we can't control that. They do that now, but I guess the reality of it is, they're traveling now at a rate of speed, can't tell you if it's thirty below or thirty above, I can't speak to that. But obviously, they're doing it on a road that's sixteen feet. So, in a safety standpoint, twenty-two really won't control their speed, but we'd like to think that it's going to control the outcome, that it mitigates the potential of people losing their animals, as we've heard in the past, mailboxes, and so on and so forth. So, again, I can't control the speed, that's not this department, regrettably. And nor can I control where people come from, or where they're going.
Yeah, the only thing you, you people can control is how wide that they make the street.
Which again, is a vast improvement over sixteen.
Right, and that's, that's part of your job, really, to make sure the surrounding roads
Can handle.
can handle the traffic.
Yes. Again, you like to hope that they come out of Casey and it's a straight shot. That's what you'd like to hope. But again, you've driven enough, you've driven enough over your, over your years. People do very unpredictable and foolish things, there's nothing you can do about it. We all drive behind them, and I'll leave it at that.
If you want to get an idea what the traffic's like, go to the police, because they hung a thing up on a telephone pole that measured the speed limit and the number of cars. And I don't know what that data is, but it's out there.
But again, we're trying to more accomplish the concerns that were aired previously in terms of widening the road, making it safer, trying to mitigate the amount of traffic, not traffic, excuse me, accidents, and so on and so forth. So we at least took what the suggestions, what your concerns were, and applied them to a standard to have this developer try to, again, help the situation to the best of their ability.
If they cut down the trees, would they replace any?
In the right-of-way?
Yeah.
Not generally.
Why would they, they have to cut them down to make the road wider?
Right, but I didn't know if they put something back, you know?
No, because in theory, the pavement would now be there. And again, they're not looking for an easement necessarily from you. They're not looking at land take, and so on and so forth. So this is kind of a, more of a direct shot. And again, the hope and anticipation is that you're trying to make the roads improved for people like yourself who actually live on them.
Appreciate that. Now, they'll, they'll keep in touch with the people that live there? You know, like, as, as they start with the plan? You know, like, as, as they start, what, what the plan is, and stuff like that?
Yeah, Mike.
No, I think, Mike, Mike, that's more Mike's department. As, as, as the work begins, and so on and so forth, that's, that's Mike's function and role. In terms of, if you have questions, concerns.
Just talk, talk to Mike.
Yeah, Mike's, Mike's the middle man, so, not the middle man, but that's, that's his function and, and position in the town. I, I would clearly advise contacting him than I would to try to contact, uh, somebody who's actually perhaps doing the work. It's just a safer bet for you to get a more direct answer through Mike, I believe.
Thank you.
Also, Scott, Scott Christopher, the Highway Savannah.
My two new best friends.
There you go.
Ronnie.
Give me your business card, Mike. Give me your business card.
Oh, you're your cop.
One of the things with the, the traffic.
We're on a budget.
With the units, you're not gonna notice increased traffic from the units, because the units, the, the people start from anywhere from four o'clock in the morning to ten o'clock in the morning to, to go. And same thing on the way, on the way in. So you, you're not gonna notice an increase. We wanted to do it because of the safety factor that you people brought up there, and if we can get that safety factor taken care of, that's a, that's a big deal.
And I appreciate it, you know, because, you know, we, uh, lived, lived it.
Yeah, I know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question in terms of this PRD? Just come on up, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Donna. Okay, here.
Sorry about that, just name and address, please.
Donna Peterson at seventy-five Beaver, and I just wanted to clarify, are there some other side streets coming out of the development besides Casey Drive, some new smaller ones? Because we missed a meeting last month, and I thought you'd mentioned that.
There are, there are two other ones.
Okay.
There's one right here, Kodiak, and then the other one right here, which is Teddy.
Okay.
So there's one, two.
Isn't that Kewala?
Kewala.
What'd you call it, Kodiak?
Same type, same type of, don't worry about it.
And then, Kodiak.
Maybe the, maybe the combined one will be Kodiak, when we put one.
That's all.
Teddy, Kodiak.
Yeah, the whole thing is, is Kodiak.
Any other questions in terms of this PRD?
Okay.
What's the pleasure of the board?
They haven't gone to sewer yet, the sewer board meets next, next week.
Okay.
So, I have a request from the applicant to continue this to September fifth. I'll take a mo, on both, uh, the PRD and the definitive subdivision, a request from the applicant to pay to September fifth, I have a motion on the continuance.
I'll move.
Motion from Lena, seconded by Johnny. Any questions on the, uh, motion, hearing none, all in favor, opposed?
No, no, no question on that, but considering we, we have to ask for a continuance, and, and I don't, I don't want the applicant necessarily to spend time or money, but it sounds like the board is, is in favor of what we've seen here, and, and, you know, we've asked some questions about it, if, if the plan for Beaver Street could be a little more defined at the next meeting, just to have that completed. Again, I, I, I don't want, I don't want them to do that unless the board's in favor of that, but if it is, I'd, I'd, I'd like to see some, some progress made on, on the, uh.
Well, not only that, but let's go one step further, Joe. I, I think it's, I think you can also give the applicant some sort of idea in terms of the bonus that he's requesting, whether or not you believe that the road improvement that he's now proposing, and the five hundred and seventeen to the Parks Department, is a sufficient grant, if you will, to allow him his fifty percent bonus density, or the forty-nine units that he's requesting. I think that's the other, uh, point, point of interest that we should probably give him direction on.
Okay.
So, in terms of that, I don't think I should take a formal, but I'd like to give some sort of informal in terms of if we think the requirement has been met for the forty-nine, or the fifty percent, forty-nine units, fifty percent bonus density, based on the, uh, what the applicant has proposed. Yes?
Yes, yes.
So Bob, I think, uh, that gives your, your client a better understanding, and I think it now, to Babe's premise, allows you to continue and do protect, you know, added engineering and work to that road, so that clearly we have a better understanding of what you're doing in terms of the bonus density, all right?
I think, I think it would be important, you know, again, we don't, we don't know, but if, if there is a wall out there,
That has to be.
And we have to do that, I'd like to know that beforehand, because if, if in fact we do, he does need an easement to do that work, I'd like to know that he can actually get that easement, too.
Correct.
It's part of the next one, so I, I think it'd be worthwhile to spend a little bit of time engineering that section of Beaver Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Ronnie.
Would, would he have to complete Beaver Street along with Casey, Casey Road, at, you know, at the same time, before he started building?
No.
Not necessarily, no.
Typically, anything that's used to trigger a density bonus, uh, the decision references what that magic number is, or the base units, where, where any units beyond that become bonus units, and it's by that point that these other improvements.
Can I just answer it in a, in a more efficient way? Typically, on these PRDs, what they give is, they give us a, uh, scheduling, um, of how they're gonna do the work phasing, if you will. Uh, we'll have a better idea once he gives us the phasing, uh, schedule.
But, but basically, he asked for Beaver before he can do the extra units.
Yeah, most likely.
Most likely, yes, but again, that all comes to play within the scheduling unit, excuse me, the, um, phasing units.
We can set the point.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at it as, as it comes forward.
To answer your question, I don't think this board is going to wait until the end for Beaver Street to be done, if that's your question. I don't think that, that's the way it's gonna be timed out, in our minds anyhow. And usually, since they need our signature, our minds have something to say about it. Right, Bob?
Peter, sorry, I was getting confused.
All right?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One more thing, just really quick. One, can I take a picture of that design, so I know where it's gonna come?
There you go.
You have that?
Stick the whole packet, my friend. You sure?
That, that's great.
Ronnie, would you like this?
That's great, and the only other question I have is, um.
Yeah, the wife wants it.
Absolutely.
Sure, sure, blame me.
There you go, September fifth, September fifth.
Moving right along.
That, that's great, and the only other question I have, or, or agree with, is with you, when you said to eliminate one of those roads on Beaver.
Teddy.
To have one, Teddy.
I think that, uh.
That's a great thing.
The town engineer also had that discussion.
Two of those coming in there is insane, you're gonna have a bunch of accidents.
Again, you have to understand something, we're giving Peter the benefit of the doubt, he's filling in for, uh, for Bob. I know Mike has had conversations with Bob, so I think some of this still needs to be vetted out.
No, no, I, I understand, no, but I think his, his idea is absolutely right.
Perfect.
The people of the street, and the people coming out of the street, too.
We'll get there, we'll get there. Thank you, see you September fifth.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a continued public hearing application for Snowflake. For a special purpose to construct Whitewood Preserve Plan Residential Development, consisting of twenty-nine detached, uh, single-family resident units, thirty-five point one eight acres, lying northerly on Whitewood Road and westerly off Reservoir. Assessors map twenty-three block one eleven, lot six C, RC zone. You prepared, or are you asking for a continuance? I see you grabbing one singular piece of paper. You're prepared, okay.
Do you wanna, do you wanna read it?
Bobby, Bob.
Peter, don't get fresh.
I'm sorry.
The applicant is seeking special permit approvals to construct Whitewood Preserve, a planned residential development on the subject property, as per VBL article, uh, six. The development is located on thirty-five point one eight acres, lying north on Whitewood Road and west on Reservoir Road. It will have a total of twenty-nine detached, single-family residential units. The density was determined by calculation to total a twenty-nine, excuse me, determined by calculation, and no bonus density is being sought. Over twenty-five acres, seventy-two percent of common open space is being provided, a minimum of fifty is required. The roadway within the PRD is to remain private. Traffic generated from the proposed development will be approximately a hundred and eighty trips per day, based on ITE Land Use Code two thirty for townhouse condo developments. All access for the development is via Kate Lane, a one thousand three hundred and forty-foot cul-de-sac that intersects on the northerly side of Whitewood Road between forty-five and forty-seven Whitewood Road. Two additional internal cul-de-sac streets are being proposed off Kate Lane. Papiya? Papiya Drive, which is two hundred and ninety in length, and Megan Way, which is four hundred and thirty in length. My daughter will be very happy if you. The road names don't appear to conflict with any other existing streets, however, Papiya Drive and Megan Way should both be designated as court, since they are short cul-de-sac streets, not connecting roadways. Units are designed to each have a two-car attached garage, and all of the units designed show two-bedroom arrangements. The development is proposed to have public sewer and water, as required. Excuse me, the draft homeowners association articles and draft master deeds also have been submitted. I recommend that the public hearing be continued. Now, this is an old letter.
Yeah, that was the original one, yeah.
Um, and you also need approval from the sewer board, as required. Like Dean, the revised site plans and additional supporting documents revised through five thirty-one addresses the items listed in my original report. I have no further outstanding issues with the project as submitted. The site will need to be serviced, uh, by an onsite sewage pump station that needs to be submitted to the sewer department and the commissioners.
I included his original letter, anybody wanted to refer to it.
Okay. From the water company.
Kind of their standard.
Well, the big one is, due to water availability, Milford Water Company is not allowing any further water service connections at that time, I'm sure you're aware of that. Yes?
We did, I did talk to the water department about that.
And then, sewer meets next week, but that's.
At this time, they only have one well going, that's the reason why.
Right.
Again, I'm sure you'll have to address this.
Right.
That's the application. Uh, Tater and Howard, the consultants to the sewer department, had submitted the memo I just handed out. So the, there's copies for the rest of them, passed them out.
Uh, here you go, Joe.
So they'll hear that next week at their sewer board meeting.
Just quickly, from Tater and Howard, which is, uh, to the sewer commissioner, it's not necessarily us, but they're gonna be recommending that the board request the following from you, the applicant. Force mains shall be installed with a continuous upward slope from the pump station to the connection to existing sewer. The dip in the force main at the beginning of the cross-country easement, station zero point seven five, sheet sixteen, should be eliminated by slightly depressing the force main in the Megan Court cul-de-sac area and through crossing number four. Impervious clay dams shall be installed every hundred foot along the force main in the cross-country easement. Cleanout manholes shown in plain, in plain view should be added to profile. Manholes which are greater than ten feet in depth shall be a minimum of five feet in diameter. Manhole diameter should be clearly labeled on the plans and profiles. Sheet sixteen detail, sheet number one includes a typical precast concrete manhole sanitary detail, which should be revised to update the model number of the manhole frame and cover as the model number references, and the detail is outdated. Manhole steps shall be spaced at twelve inches on center, manhole shall meet all other provisions of the town of Milford's standard specifications for sewer. Including a detail for connection of the existing, not for nothing, but I'm not gonna continue to read this. If you, you're more than happy to have a copy of it. Oh, you do, then.
Those are the details that you're gonna be looking at the sewer board again, for points of discussion.
And Peter had, uh, distributed half-size sheets, uh.
Peter, feel free to take it away.
Okay, uh, for the record, my name's Peter Lavoy, I work with Gary, Aaron, and Helnon. I am the project manager on this project, um, here representing. No, I'm not filling in right now.
He's himself, no.
This is me.
Okay. So if we have questions, you should have answers.
I should have the answers, yes.
Ah, boy, all right.
I'm here for Snowflake LLC, uh, with me tonight is Kevin Lobusser, he's in the front row. Uh, and I will do my presentation. Okay, so, like you said, the project is outlined in red. In this location here, we have Whitewood running along the bottom of the page. Highland Street is right here, Reservoir Street is right here. The parcel is roughly, um, thirty-five point one acres in size. As you can see, there are wetlands throughout the parcel, um, it is vacant right now. So basically, what we want to do is, we wanna propose, uh, twenty-nine units in this location here, as well as up here. Uh, we have, the development consists of three roads. Um, Kate Lane, which starts off of Whitewood and goes to the cul-de-sac in this location here, uh, which is roughly thirteen forty in length. Uh, we have this small cul-de-sac right here, which is roughly four hundred and thirty feet, and that's Megan Court. And then we have this small cul-de-sac right here, which is roughly three hundred feet, and that's Papiya Court, right there. The twenty-nine units will have, um, will be serviced by gravity sewer down to a pump station, so this is all gonna go gravity down to the pump station, which is on Papiya Court, and then that will be pumped up all the way up, up to Whitewood, and continue up to Highland Street to the High Point. There's an existing sewer manhole, um, that we are going to tie into, uh, on Highland Street. Also on Highland Street, there are, uh, a couple, about seven houses that will have, um, two-inch force mains put into the road and stubbed at the property line, so we are going to supply, I think it's roughly seven houses on Highland Street that, right now, doesn't have, um, sewer, they have septic, and they will be able to tie into that, um, tie into those, um, uh, force mains. Water, basically, coming off of Whitewood, we're gonna have an eight-inch line come in, it's gonna service, um, the development, and then we're gonna complete the loop and tie it back out to here on Whitewood. So that'll be an eight-inch line throughout the project. Drainage, uh, basically drainage, uh, we have the beginning portion of Karen Lane, roughly about here down, will be collected by catch basins, um, put into a storm scepter, and then discharged into this wetland right here. Um, then, I kind of brought the drainage down to collect as much as I could of, uh, Karen Lane. Kate Lane, sorry, Ca, Ca, uh, Kate Lane. I'm bringing it back into, uh, detention pond one, so this area here, as well as this area up to here, will be going into this detention pond in this location here, which will have a four bay, and then it will discharge into like a, a level spreader on the outside. Um, the rest of development, this cul-de-sac with, with this development, as well as this cul-de-sac, will be collected in, um, I have a bigger plan here. I have a basin in this location here, so you can see, um, basically, these, these catch basins here, and the rest of the development will go into this detention pond, and then that will go into a, a level spreader, so it's more of a sheet flow kind of, um, discharge. Uh, we are proposing three, uh, wetland crossings, the first one here, a small one right here, and then another one in this location here. So with that, we also have replication, uh, with those. Um, we are in front of Conservation right now, that, we've already had a meeting with Conservation. They seem, I, I, I think I've resolved, uh, all of their concerns, we're waiting on the planning board, um, if anything else comes up. Also, another point, within the development, there will be a, a sidewalk on all streets, so.
Zane Ridge?
Zane Ridge, correct. And we also proposed an area down near Whitewood for a bus stop, and then, we are, we also proposed, um, signs along that entrance that says no parking, with, all the way up there.
They did that, too.
They did that, too?
Yeah, it didn't work.
Well, but they didn't have the bus stop when they first did that, so.
They didn't have a sidewalk either.
They will have now.
Uh-huh.
They do now.
I think that's it, I mean, questions? I can answer questions, but that's the basic overall.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, Peter, what's the head from the, uh, sewer pump station to the manhole on?
I'm not sure about that. I, we, uh, we subbed that out for an engineer to, to design that, I don't. We are in front of, we did submit to the sewer board, uh, Tater and Howard did comment, as you know, with that, and we did make the changes, and we have. with that, and we did make the changes, and we have, uh, we submitted that to Tater and Howard. We are in front of the sewer board on the twenty-second, um, hopefully to get approval.
It's got to be pretty good, babe. It's got to be pretty good.
Yeah, it's like sixty to eighty feet, I think, but that was going back quite some time. I don't remember.
I know that the force main size itself is a six-inch diameter, and I think it has more to do with probably, um, the head.
The head's the thing that counts, not the.
Yeah.
I'm sure that they're going to, you know, with the problems they had with the head on one of the field barn, that, uh, your design's going to be.
Right, but that, this pump station will only service the twenty-nine years.
I understand that. It's still going to push out.
No, I know, I'm just saying. All the other, all the other force mains are separate for individual within Highland.
You could, you, you caught as many houses as you could with the force main.
Correct, yep.
That's going to be a separate force main now, a two-inch?
Um, each house is going to have their own two-inch line.
Oh, off the six-inch line?
No. Each, all, each one of the houses on Highland Street, um, over here, will have their own two-inch line going up.
So, you're going to have?
Into that manhole.
You're going to have seven two-inch lines running up to?
That's what, that we did, I did meet with John informally, and that's what he wanted. Because I know there are a couple force mains in that street right now as well that tie into that sewer manhole. I think there's like two.
There's two.
That'll all be lined out next Tuesday.
The only issue I had, I, I, I'm torn in terms of the length of the cul-de-sac and the entrance way.
Um, I did look at that, Joe. And I went, I did some research on some of the PRDs, and I also read that, um, we have two long driveways right here, uh, Unit twenty-two and Unit twenty-three. So, basically, what we were, you know, I figured that would come up. I was thinking of doing like a gravel emergency, so if anything did happen, they could use.
I'm, I'm more, to be honest, Peter, I'm more worried about the entrance way in, in, in the fact that if there were, if there was an accident or anything along that end exit, where we have, we have twenty-six units that an ambulance or a fire truck could not get to.
Well, I just.
And, and, and we're at the, you know, we're at the limits of, I, I know this board has previously approved, and I don't necessarily like it, but when we've approved others, I just, I, I don't really like the, the design per se with that length. I'm, I'm safety issues.
Well, I, I, can I, I have a couple that I could just go through, a couple projects that are similar to this. I tried to look at similar-sized projects. Um, so, the first one was Zane Ridge. Um, roughly, that's, well.
Zane Ridge Road.
Zane Ridge Road. That one's basically seventy units, and there's, it's the same, you know, there's the same, uh, and, uh, that cul-de-sac is like fourteen-hundred feet long to the, the big loop in the back. So, that's, that's got seventy units. Um, Granite Woods Condos, uh, I think it's better than Boulevard. That one's, that one's similar to this. That one's thirty, thirty-one units, and that also has a fourteen-hundred-foot length of cul-de-sac. And that doesn't, you know, it's the standard. And then Dynasty Estates, that has, that has eighty units, and that's, that, that's eight-hundred feet to the loop as well.
Oh, I know they exist.
No, I know, I know.
It, it doesn't, doesn't mean that I'm happy with them, nor that I was on the board when they happened either.
No, I understand. I just wanted to let you know that.
I guess the, the quick, quick question, um, is you have a sixteen-hundred-foot road to service four houses, I guess.
Thirteen.
Well, I'm looking towards the end. There's only four at the end.
Yep, or, it's thirteen-hundred feet.
Thirteen, sixteen, twelve, come on.
Okay.
Anyhow, there's no other way of, of perhaps relocating those four houses, um, either somewhere on, you know, splitting them up, so to speak. Again, I know you played with wetlands, I know you played with geographic or, or topography and so on and so forth. I understand that, but I, I, you know, is there a way to, to Joe's point, to try to shorten the road and, and, you know?
Well, what I, what I had said, what I'd asked Mike when this first came in and, and, and all was to look at, to me, the issue was, was really that entrance, and to look at as opposed to, and I know, I don't know that we've done it here, but it's been done elsewhere, of, of doing a, um, separate in, uh, effectively one-way pair, uh, that's separated by a median in the middle, as opposed to, um, you know, having the road together, just so if there was an accident on one side or the other, the other side would be available for emergency vehicles to some extent, because they're separated. You know, at least as you come into the, as you come into the, uh, you know, up to, up to the first cul-de-sac or, or, or when you come into the main portion of the site, just to, just to allow emergency vehicles the opportunity to get in. I think once they get into the site, they're relatively close to distances they've had to deal with before in terms of getting there. But, but the problem is they've got six-hundred feet before they get into any portion of the site, really, and that's, that's what I was concerned about.
I, I mean, I just feel that the, if you do with, uh, that island in the middle, doesn't that really constrain on, then you're really constrained on access road on either side? It kind of makes it smaller. Right now, you have a twenty-four-foot wide open area, but if you start putting something in the middle, then.
Well, you have something, you also have something in the middle to protect people from going over to the other side to a certain extent. And you also end up with twenty-eight feet between them if you put a four-foot median in the middle to twelve-foot lanes. So, you widen out that whole area, and you have something in the middle. You also have a curb in the middle to, to stop, to at least stop some amount of people.
One of the things.
You know, what's the right-of-way, and, uh, this is, the width of the right-of-way this.
There is no right-of-way.
Well, you're creating.
You've got to get in somewhere, Peter.
The axis, yeah, what's that, what's that, the axis in?
Right here, that's the normal. I mean, it's twenty-four feet wide.
No, 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 what, what do you have available for land? How wide is that, is that, is that axis? Right-of-way, yeah.
Basically, yeah, we just have fifty feet, sorry.
But, but if they, if they looked at the initial run of road, to your point, Joe, instead of doing it at twenty-four feet wide, uh, my suggestion would be that they do it at least twenty-six feet wide back to the second cul-de-sac. And to, to some degree at least, that'd begin to get at, uh, the, the thing that we were talking about, that you were concerned about in terms of, uh, adequate width in, in terms of access to that number of units. My concern with, with the Boulevard approach, um, it, it, it's not that, I'm not sure that this is a high enough density that, that would warrant that, I don't know.
You're talking twenty-nine units, you're talking, no, he's not even requesting a bonus, and again, I can see why, but, I mean, again, I'd be more amenable if he could re, re, try to shorten the road by relocating those four houses. I don't know if that's possible, but putting, putting, putting a Boulevard in the middle, I don't see what purpose that serves for twenty-nine houses, I don't.
But to the, to the point of.
Aesthetically, too, I mean.
Well, to the point of shortening.
Trying to fit it into the neighborhood and blend the project.
Well, you're creating your own neighborhood.
Preserve, that's why we're saving seventy-two percent on the property, not to pave the entire property.
Right, and, and to that point of the length of the cul-de-sac, the original proposal had houses even further north into the development.
You should put some behind our Lockland House.
And I had recommended that they shorten it and do what you're looking at, as opposed to, I don't know if it even show, yeah, well, you can, you'd have to show it on the big one, where the other units were originally. Uh, because when we first looked at the, the proposed layout, the, the, there were units even further north with long driveways. And it was reconfigured to pull it back and do the, the layout that you're looking at now. So, uh, my suggestion would be at least to consider a twenty-six-foot wide road to the second cul-de-sac to, to begin to get at the, the access concern.
I think there needs, I think there needs to be some consideration. I, 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 I'm, I believe the safety issues, I, I, I can't support it in terms of the safety issues with a twenty-four-foot wide road and that, and that depth to get back. I mean, I'm, I'm worried about emergency vehicles getting there. If it's twenty-six feet, at least some, some recognition of, of that and some, some way addressing it. I'm not going to do the engineering, but.
Joe, uh, how far would you want it to go to the first intersection, or just in the, the ways down the road?
I mean, I think if you're going at twenty-six feet, I think you're better off just taking it to the first intersection.
No, no, if you went the, with the, the.
The split. Once, once they get, you know, I think once you get inside the, 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 the main portion, I, I think you could, you could make something to bring it back together at that point. I mean, I, I was looking more, because I'm worried about, I, I was worried about an accident up in this front section, not, not in the back.
No, I, I understand. Uh, again.
No, I wouldn't, I.
And you'd want a break.
Roland Green, that Roland Green Drive is one of the ones. It's got, it's just got it in a certain way, and then it goes to a normal road.
Yeah, and if it's very long, you wouldn't, you need a break.
There's one in October that we did at Roosevelt Estates that, that's that way. There, there's a couple that's been done. I'm not saying that's the way you have to do it. I'm just saying that, that I, I have safety concerns, and I think they need to be addressed, and I don't think this plan at twenty-four feet necessarily does that. And, you know, that was, that was one way of doing it. I think twenty-six at least gets you to some point of, especially if you're doing twenty-six and you've got a level area around it, too, so you can get vehicles around and stuff. So, taking a look at what that grading looks like as you, as you move through that section.
What is the grading?
And, and this area here?
Yeah.
You're basically filling this area here and then kind of matching grade as you come up. So, you're just, you're filling, it, it's kind of like a valley. You come in and you go down and then up, because that's where the wetland is. So, it would be, you know, it, it's pretty flat.
Yeah, we get to have a few cross-sections through there, too, Peter, so we get an idea of, of, of what's going on. Again, you know, you go to, if you had a three-to-one slope directly off the, off the end of it, that becomes an issue, too. If you're telling me that we've got a, a large level area out there and, you know, of, of, emergency vehicle could mount a curb and drive on a flat level area to get around, that helps, too, but I don't know what you've got out there.
Okay, I mean, I mean, it is pretty flat. I mean, I'm kind of matching grade as I go up here.
Joe, they're going to put a sidewalk in anyway, so we have that much.
You're going to have twenty-six plus four.
Twenty-six plus the, plus the five or more, so we're in pretty good shape that way, if, if you put the twenty-six, yeah, yeah.
No, that, that may be fine, I, I, I.
I think the sidewalk's going to add to the.
If you're going to drive up over curbs.
Right.
We drive up over the sidewalk, right?
Yeah.
You always get into that funky thing anyway, right? I mean, we both live in that area, so what happens when an action or a tree happens in the middle of the road?
They close the road down, they close it down, then, okay.
And how are you getting there? I mean, you're going all around.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, this is twenty-nine houses, it's.
I'm not overly concerned that the, again, I think Joe's, it's conceivable that an accident could occur from one of your residents coming out and therefore block everything, and then someone coincidentally at the same time could be having a medical situation that happens to live in the back, and therefore makes it somewhat challenging for an ambulance to get to them. But again, I, I think if you're level and you can demonstrate that, then I think, um, it serves the same purpose that, you know, this is what happens when you only have one way in and one way out. And really, I, I don't see any other entry points. I see where you brought in the water in the sewer, but that's not really, there's no, you can't even put a gravel road through there and call it emergency, because it's, you just don't have it, so there is no other.
We would be affect, we would affect the wetlands a lot more going.
But, but there is no, but I mean, again, we were putting in the water in the sewer if there was a way to put in some sort of gravel emergency road, but I don't see that. I don't see that that's even a possibility, so. And there's no other effective room for you to cut in a road anywhere else without, in my, you know, in my opinion, unless you went out to the back there, and I don't even know if you have any land back there, but you know what? Now, you're creating a drive-through. And you're, and you're, and effectively messing up two neighborhoods, and that's not what you're looking for, and you want to maintain this private, so.
Well, they do have to go to sewer board next.
Well, I know they were coming back. Everyone's coming back September fifth.
Yeah, it's going to be a fun meeting.
Oh, I know that, but. Any other questions from the board before I open it up to the audience? No? No? Okay, seeing that this is a public meeting, is there anyone from the audience that has a question regarding this PRD? For Whitewood Preserve. Sir, come on up.
Yeah.
Sit right aside of Kevin. Identify your, by name and address, please.
Yeah, I'm forty-seven Whitewood Road. I'm right there adjacent to that Kate Lane, I think.
Your name, sir?
It's Tony Bogner, B-O-G-N-E-R.
Thank you.
No problem. Um, so, I haven't ever lived by a sewer pumping station, but I'm kind of curious. I'm going to get some wafting aroma coming from that, so I was wondering if anybody has any comment on that?
You shouldn't.
Shouldn't, okay.
Shouldn't.
And then the sidewalks, are the sidewalks on both sides of, uh, the lane?
Nope, just one.
Is it on the west or the east side?
It's on this side.
West.
Okay. North up, Peter.
Got it.
West.
Wasn't a very good.
And the sidewalk is for the benefit of the residents that, that are living there. And the sidewalks are there, uh, knowing that these are only two-bedroom, obviously, there, there could be, uh, some people who are buying it that may actually have school-aged children, so the, the sidewalks there to be able to effectively bring the children down to collect the bus, will not go into the subdivision.
Sure, okay. And then lastly, I'm, I'm aware of an easement, a construction easement on the edge of our property, but I'm assuming none of the construction actually falls, or the, like, the sidewalks or anything fall on there?
No, we, we stayed out of the construction easement that were on each side. We stayed within that fifty-foot area. So, we're not touching anything outside of our property.
Okay, and then the grade that you need for the road and the sidewalks all lines up with our property, uh, selections?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Not changing anything on your property.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir?
Hello, my name is Steve Priest, one-ninety-seven Highland Street, and what I was curious about. Want to get comfortable?
Feel free.
Uh, I was just, uh, just curious about if we were to tie into the sewer, you know, is there someone that we should contact? How much it costs and, you know, what to know about?
We could give, I could give you names of people to, you know, try, help, to help you tie into that.
Okay, no, no, I'm just curious what, what, what would be needed, because right now our septic tank, you know, everything for septic works fine, but for resale, you know, it's, you know, I feel.
What is the plan, to put a stub in front of his house or bring the stub to his property line?
Property line.
Property line, right. So, then all he would need to, you, all you would need, you would need to put in a, a pump chamber on your property and just tie that pump chamber to the two-inch stub that would be at the right-of-way.
Well, he'd need a sewer permit, too.
And he would need a sewer permit.
You'd probably just end up using your septic tank. Depending on you, do you could retrofit the septic tank.
Right, depending where the septic is, if it's in the front or backyard, I guess it doesn't matter.
That, that's where the sewer's coming out now. You're not going to want to change it in the house anyway, so you're going to have to pick it up at, at, at the septic tank. It's just a matter of whether you retrofit the septic tank and put a pump chamber in.
Yeah.
You would end up with a pump situation. This isn't, it would definitely end up having to be a pump. You're pumping into a, into a small line. It's not a gravity line from your property.
Okay.
So, you end up putting a pump and tying in with, with a line that's going to be in the street.
And what happens if you lose electricity?
Pump stops working.
You, that, it, it goes into a, it goes into a tank that has capacity to store a certain amount of, of, of septic in it, so that if you lose, if you lose electricity, you have a couple days that it would fill up the tank.
Okay, so there, there is a little.
Yeah, that's the way.
There's some fail safes.
Okay, no, no, I just wanted to get an idea, you know, it's like anything else, we don't plan on selling or anything.
No, no, but it gives you the added option to your point in the future, that sewer is now in front of you that wasn't there before.
Right.
And obviously, whether you switch it over or the ultimate homeowner whom you sell it to, the, uh, the benefit's still in front of you.
Okay, that's, and, oh, who would, who, how would I find out about people that would do work like that and how that, how that comes about?
You could talk, you could call Gary Aaron Hellnon, or you could call Mike. Mike will give you names.
The other thing, sir?
Sewer department has a list of, sewer department has a list of their contractors that, uh.
That'd be everything then, sewer department, okay.
The other thing, sir, a lot of times when they're doing the road work, contractor whom Kevin hired, sometimes because he's already there in the road, may, and I don't know who he's using, I don't care, may actually give you your best because he's already right in front of you. You see what I'm saying?
Well, that's, that's another thing, too. You know, I figured if everybody tied in and hey, we'll do, you know, six for a little bit less.
There you go. That's, and, and a lot of times that does work out, uh, because they're already in the street and he's already doing the work and
Okay.
Really makes no difference to him, so.
Right. Okay, no, that's.
Just, just food for thought. Whomever you choose to do is your own business, but, all right?
I'm ready.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Yes, sir, come on back.
We'll ask the freebie.
No, just come on, come on up, sir.
Let me go ahead and ask the freebie while I'm here.
There's freebies tonight?
You can educate me on how sewage, sewage works and all that. Um, given that that pumping station is like on the backside of my property and knocking on the door, is it possible for me to connect there? And again, I have no plans to, to do such, but is it required to be on the street?
This is where it's going to get a little challenging for you. It doesn't technically go by you.
Okay.
So, you don't have the same luxuries that he has, because he needs to go in front of his house. He's not going in front of your house. Now, if you and Kevin decide one night to go drinking or whatever happens, happens, that's, you're on your own, but in terms of what he's showing us, no, regrettably.
Yep.
It's not by you, even though it's close to you.
That's the answer I expected.
The other ones, the other ones are actually in separate lines going to the manhole where yours would have to go into the sewer pumping station that was, uh, being maintained by the, uh, condo association.
Yeah, and they'd also need to give you an easement and so on and so forth.
They would have to charge you a, a fee.
Just thought I'd ask while I was here.
Yeah, you get two fees, one from the sewer board, one from them.
Yep. Thank you.
Anyone else? Nope, all right. So, keeping in standards, we have an, uh, request from the applicant to, um, grant the extension to September fifth. Do I have a motion on the extension? Motion by Joe, seconded by Lena. Any discussion? Hearing not. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? See you on September fifth. Lena and, uh, Joe. We have an amended site plan for forty-four Green Street.
This is just to, uh, update the board. Uh, there's a concern that, uh, the property owner there hadn't removed, uh, or relocated the storage trailer in back that he'd gotten a special permit for a year or two ago. It has been moved, uh, and, um, the, uh, I don't think Peter brought the Mylar for you to sign tonight, so I'll have to call you tomorrow.
Uh, Peter, you know what? You know where I work. Bring it to my office. I'm tired of coming up here to sign paperwork.
There you go, there you go. Uh, so the other good news is that, uh, the, the new tenant, um,
Doesn't need it?
That's going to, that's going to be opening the store there will only need it for the time period of changeover in, in terms of getting his new store up and running. Once he's done with all of that, his intention is to remove it altogether. So it'll be gone. I'm not sure how many months that's gonna take, but it's gonna be, it's not gonna take long. But they did relocate it according to the plan and, uh, the, the site plan shows that, uh, Peter had updated.
Thank you, Larry. All right, we have a bond lot release request, modification of South Central Estates Two. Uh, I've reviewed the request for all the lots to be released associated with the Gordon Drive portion of South Central Estates Two. Following several discussions with the applicant's engineer and subsequent revisions to the cost estimate, I am satisfied with the amount of the cost estimate of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven fifty-one point four one. This is the minimum amount that the bond should reflect. From the applicant themselves, please accept this letter as a former request to planning board vote to release lot numbers one through eighteen. As shown on the subdivision plan described as definitive plan of land in Milford and Bellingham, Mass. Scale hundred feet to an inch dated February sixteenth, twenty-ten, from the conditional approval contract dated December eleventh, twenty-twelve, and recorded with the Worcester County Registry of Deeds and Book five, uh, fifty thousand, one fifty-eight, page ninety. At that point in time, much of the construction of ways and installation of municipal service necessary to serve such lots have been completed in accordance with the Convenance, Conditions, Agreements, Terms and Provisions. Attached herein, please find a construction cost estimate and the, for the remainder of the work to be completed. And again, Mike has come up with that number.
Well, I worked with the engineers. They submitted it and they adjusted their own form and.
But you're so comfortable with the seven?
Yes, I'm comfortable with it, yep.
I still don't understand for the life of me why, you know, just round it up to seven hundred and seventy-five, but.
You can do that.
Oh, I'd, I'd round it up to eight hundred.
There you go.
Easy for, easy for you.
Easy, if, if I can round up the numbers, I mean, come on.
Those couple of bucks.
All right. So again, we have a request to release lots one through eighteen inclusive and retain a bond in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, forty-one cents. Do I have a motion? Motion by Joe, uh, by John, excuse me, seconded by?
Lena.
Lena. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Now we have, uh, design change discussion.
Do we get to sign release forms or not?
Yeah, I don't know where they are.
Did you bring the form? The lot release form?
The original, the one that's in there, there's a copy.
Yeah, the original? Okay, see you on the fifth. All right, then we finally have a, can I just continue then if you don't mind, Peter? Thank you. Design change discussion, um. Gentlemen, who's here for that? No one, someone? Someone, someone's gotta run up to the microphone. All right, uh, let's see.
I can give some lead-in explanation if it'd help. The, uh, subdivision that, uh, or the, um, yeah, the affinity plan for Sunila Crossing had shown a number of, um.
Retaining walls?
Walls that were clearly shown on the plan as concrete retaining walls.
Oh.
None of them were built as concrete retaining walls. They were all built as stone walls instead. Uh, and, uh, at least it's my contention and I think, uh, I think Mike agrees that that's not what was on the plan. And if they're to stay, they are gonna need a modification of the subdivision, uh, which obviously requires a new public hearing and your approval.
Can I just back you up for a quick question? At the time, I'm assuming this was pre-Mike, so.
Yes.
Ronnie.
Yeah.
At the time, there used to be, at the cost of the developer, when, when this was occurring, wouldn't there have been an engineer or wouldn't there have been someone there when these were being built?
Subdivisions that I've been involved with since I've been on, they call, I go up there for inspections as they're building certain.
So I guess my question is, let's be fair about this. Did Ronnie know that they were building stone walls? I know that it was, hold on. I know none of us here can answer that because she's not here. But clearly, I don't think they built them at night, so I, I guess my question is, someone knew they were building stone walls?
There's nothing in the record that, uh, uh, in terms of approving stone walls, to, that they could build the stone walls.
All right.
Beyond that, I, I can't, I can't comment on.
Well, it just seems strange that they didn't get built at night, so. Were the stone walls engineered or have they been engineered structurally?
Yes, we had them, after talking to Mike, we had, uh, stone wall structurally engineered. I believe that was submitted to Mike.
After the fact.
Mike, has the stone walls been certified?
Well, this is a report from a structural engineer in which it was high.
I can't read this information.
I understand, so they, they went out on af-, this came up during the lot release.
Yep.
I said, you know, what happened with these walls here? They're boulder walls. And I said, that's not what the plan calls for, so I at least had the money put up under, on, through the bond.
Yep.
To secure, in case it ever has to be changed to concrete. So then, this, so in discussion with, with, uh, the proponents, I would say, I said, well, if you're gonna go that route to change them because they're already there, I would first stop by evaluating the walls with the structural engineer to see what we have there. And that's what they've done. So this is just an inspection substantiating what's there. I haven't, I wasn't out there during the test pits. I, you know, this is what was submitted from a structural engineer and the structural engineer is saying that they're adequate. So.
Again, I'm just a little confused.
I wasn't out there. I did not witness the test pits. I'm not a structural engineer either, so.
Just, it's easy. It's a set of plans that got calls for concrete walls. That's what you put in.
I don't think it's that easy, babe, because if, I, I know what the plan said.
That easy for me.
Hold on a second, though. They were paying for, for, for inspection services at the time under our request. I'm just confused how these got built.
They never, they never.
Think it was that far with Ronnie.
They didn't use the inspection.
I, I, I'm just confused if, if, if the.
Yeah, I don't think they were paying for any inspections, if that's your question. That I haven't.
We, we put in for, for the, for that to be an inspector out there. There was no inspector hired. She took care of it herself. This is what you get.
Yeah, but I, I'm, then that's what's confusing to me, so she must have known or must have seen at the time that they were building stone walls.
I, 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 I understand that. I don't, I don't know what she seen, what she saw. I opened up a set of plans. I build something. If it says concrete, that's what I build.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know that we even know when, when these were put in necessarily with her or Mike or whatever. I mean, it, it.
Well, they were there before I, well, the first day I was there, they were built.
Yeah.
So they weren't put in since I've been on board.
This is something the town's gonna end up having over the years and having to repair and everything else and, uh, it's not right. Every other, every other developer puts in the concrete walls like they're supposed to.
Did the, I, I guess one question I had, the, I'm not sure, this answers is, does this change the wetland filing to begin with? I mean, the slope should be different. I would assume there's more wetland impact based on having these walls if they're in, if they're in the right position.
That I'm not sure of because we don't have a detailed ASB build up for them either, either.
I mean, I would, I would think that would be another issue that, that would have to be addressed because I, I would assume that, you know, the one-on-twelve at the most, I'm looking at a gravity wall that's at least six feet. So we got a five-foot difference on both sides of the road in terms of impact to a wetland. I, I, I'm guessing.
And the hi-, and the height of these walls requires that, uh, an engineer to design it and be there when they're building it.
Right.
It's just this, that's any wall that's being built, so. I don't see the problem. Just build the walls.
Does the, uh, just again, I'm not sure if you know on the building code, because it, the calculations reference it meeting the building code? The building code car-, cover loading for highway situations?
No, I don't see how it would.
No. I mean, I'm looking at it. I think he did it, but I'm not positive that I can, I can find out. I mean, he's got three hundred, he's got three hundred pounds of, uh, overburden, which I believe is H twenty loading. So I think he covered it, but I'm not positive.
There's nothing in, there's nothing in the.
I mean, I wouldn't have thought there was, but that's, that's the only thing that's referenced here and.
Building code is, if it's over a certain height, there's gonna be so much rebar.
Yeah.
If it's over a certain height, there has to be, uh, a rail, a guard rail.
Yeah, well, it, it, I mean, there's a statement here that says it sustains all applied loads in accordance with Mass Building Code. I'm not sure that that statement meets our requirement or not. That's why I'm asking the question. I mean, I think, you know, again, we have to make sure that he's, he's handling it for H twenty loading. I believe he actually did the calculations doing that, but his certification needs to, would need to say that anyways.
But that kind of begs the question, uh, the, the subdivision called for concrete retaining walls. They weren't built. The only way to keep them there is to modify the subdivision, which is reopening the hearing, uh, and the board would have to make a decision. But to the extent that it's already been approved one way and it wasn't built that way, you can give them a pretty good idea right now what the answer's gonna be, without necessarily going through the whole process. If the board's of a mind to at least consider, uh, the modification, then they would go that route and request a modification of the subdivision, so that you could, uh, consider that design change. But if the board's not amenable to doing that, then the solution is to build what was approved, which should have been done in the first place, to my mind. Well, you found him?
Sounded like the head wall bothers me. But this looks like it's in the middle of nowhere. I'm like, oh.
I don't disagree. The head wall one looks a little funky. Some of these look like, uh, they're on a country road somewhere.
It looks like they just got a bunch of boulders and put them in a certain way to make it look like it's a wall, but when I look at it, I, I don't really see the wall that I've seen throughout other areas.
I've been down there. They look a little bit better than those pictures, but still.
Really?
They're not, uh, it's too bad. You, the contractor, right, you, believe me, did a very nice job on the.
Thank you.
I make coffee.
And this is the only problem I see.
Set them off.
I know we have inspection, doesn't make it.
Set them off.
I, literally, every bi-weekly, I walk there for an hour and a half with Ronnie. So as far as inspection goes, Ronnie and I walked the Constitution Ave line, the entire road, uh, looking at everything, every, every two weeks on Friday, right after lunch, religiously.
I understand that. I, I get that.
It's not like we didn't, she was out there every day. I know that when Mike took over, he kind of got handed it and I understand that fact, but it's not like, like, uh, Pat said, I didn't, I didn't build them at night hoping no one would see them. So.
Don't blame me.
She had said at that point, no, I want these. She said, no, these will be fine. And then when we went for the lot release, Mike, because he's, he took over, he has a job to do. He says it has to be structurally engineered. That's what we did. So that's why that brings us to this point here. Like I said, I wasn't trying to hide, you can't hide a boulder wall. It's not like I built it.
I, I, I understand that.
So, and, and like I said, I, I personally walked every Friday afternoon for at least an hour and a half with Ronnie on the road. You know?
Did she see this?
Yes.
She did.
Just out of curiosity, how did the discussion go when you looked at the plan and said that it was supposed to be concrete? And I, I'm just curious how the discussion went between you and Ronnie?
She said it would be a modification if you wanted to boulder walls and she said they'd be fine. One of the walls that, that you, I don't think they have a picture of it. It's really all it is, it's not even on the plan for a wall. It's just the, the slope that's there. So I don't think they have that picture. That's the one you're looking at.
Yeah, that's why, I mean, some of those, I.
I'm not really sure what we're looking at. This is the problem.
I haven't seen the picture, but I can see from over here, they don't look that pretty in the picture. We can see.
Well, the answer that it needs a modification was the correct answer, and you didn't get a modification.
No, she said when we went for completion. When Mike took over, I mean, it, I, I didn't make this up, but literally, every Friday afternoon, it's not like two hours, an hour and a half out of my day, walk over, any concerns she had, we met them. Any issues that arise, we took care of them. You know?
So was all the walls completed when Ronnie was, looked at it? Is that what you're telling me?
The whole job was completed when Ronnie was still in, in, uh, office, or whatever you call it.
Okay.
But this is, Mike took over after we were done, went through a winter.
Something seems strange.
Yeah, Mike came in for bar release. He wasn't there for any part of the construction.
Okay.
It was all under, you wanna call it Ronnie's jurisdiction, I guess you wanna call it.
And this is just a discussion as to which direction we think the planning board would wanna go or how to handle it.
Right, right.
If, if you decide to do a modification, there's a lot more steps we could take to make sure those walls are adequate.
Well, well, right.
But if you just don't want them, that's a different issue too.
Okay. It just.
Yeah, it seems like a waste of everybody's time.
You don't have to vote on it tonight. There's no vote. It's a, excuse me, it's a discussion.
It's just a discussion.
But if, if it's clear to the board's mind tonight, if the majority of the board wants it built the way it was approved, then you could say that now and save everybody a lot of time. If, if there's any chance that the board may, um, favorably consider a modification to keep the stone walls, then say that and they can start the process of applying to, for the modification.
We can meet any, I can meet any member out there on their free time. We can look at it. You can continue this discussion, whatever you wanna do. You don't have to. It got put, I think Larry put it on the agenda to get the ball rolling. This was submitted a little while ago. I haven't gone through this with a fine-tooth comb. I haven't gone over everything, but at least this starts the discussion to figure out what, what we need to do. Because it is a big-ticket item on the.
Yeah, sure.
It's two hundred thousand dollars on.
I, I'd like, I'd like to understand, you know, where they are and, and, and the lengths and stuff. I mean, I got pictures and I saw one crossing.
Five hundred and fifty feet existed.
Yeah, I'm looking at this saying, I don't think this is all here and maybe there's locations that it's not as critical. I'm looking at this one and saying, you know, I probably.
Those are some other things. Give me an ASB. What is this? And then we hire a consultant, a structural engineer or something.
But my concern was that waiting longer.
No, that's not gonna serve anyone.
No, no, I, I agree.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, I want, I want the concrete walls because I don't want the town to be responsible for the repair and everything with these, these walls.
Lena?
I agree. I, I, I.
Johnny?
Yeah, I, I would agree, but I don't know if you could modify what you have now to mix. Because some of these walls seems to be out in left field or in the backyard or somewhere, you know?
I don't really know where these walls are.
They're all parallel. They're all parallel to run it on the sides of the right-of-way.
So they're on the road?
That's right.
To some degree. I have never seen an ASB, so that's.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, if I, if I have a wall somewhere down here and it's, it's, it's fifteen feet off the, off the edge of the, the ru-, the right-of-way.
Who cares?
I don't care, if that's where they are. I mean, if, if, if I've got this one at the head wall, I'm probably not going to.
The head wall looks a little funky. That one definitely. That one looks a little. That one looks a little. Looks a little funky. Some of these, that, that look like, to this point, they're in the middle of nowhere, I, I, I don't know what they represent, that's the problem.
Yeah, it's hard to locate spatially where those, if they told us.
Again, the, these pitches are not really, they're not helping, a, and they're only adding more. I mean, this one over here off the side looks like it's, you know, thirty feet off the road, I, I don't know that, though. You, you know what I'm saying, if you look at this one, you look at the shadow of the road.
Yeah, you wouldn't know.
I, I don't know, it looks perfectly harmless to me, it looks like it's thirty feet off the road, and what difference does it make?
I can make myself available today.
Again, this is why.
Well, it'd have been one thing if they would have done the concrete walls and put the stone in front of it, uh, for a decorative feature, but they didn't build the concrete walls, uh, and to, to somebody's point, I guess it was Joe, that said it had they gone to Concom with a plan to do what they did, they may have had to make other concessions to Conservation Commission to get that approval, because this is taking up more space and encroaching more into the wetlands than the concrete walls that were designed on the plan.
We have one pass limit to discharge.
I would say. Like I said, I don't, I, I don't know where some of these represent, that's the problem. This one, I can't tell if it's right on, if it's right on the side of the road, I can't tell, it just doesn't.
I understand.
That's, that's some of the creations of problems.
Yeah, I mean, between now and our next meeting, I'll take a ride through just to see, just to try to get a feel for where the walls are, but I mean.
Let, let me give you. Let me give you. Let me give you some sense of what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing is, most of the members prefer you to go by plan, which tells you all these rocks gotta go, okay? But I also think that some members are willing to go and look.
I am.
So your best-case scenario is, you're gonna be looking at a modification, which is gonna be costly for you, and you're gonna be looking at eliminating some of these rocks, so again, at the end of the day, not following the plan, at this juncture is gonna cost you money, I, I, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, that's what's gonna happen. I don't know to what extent the other members are gonna go look with Mike, so I, I don't know what to tell you, but I guess, again, we'll have to reconvene this discussion yet again to September 5th.
Right. Parked the date.
Well, like I said, and, and again, at the end of the day, you, you're gonna be, on some of these, you're certainly gonna restill them back to what the plan says. Like I said, this head wall looks definitely funky, this one, I can't tell, uh, the proximity of the road, it just doesn't look. You know what I'm saying, so, and again, let's be honest with one another, we have to look at this somewhat objectively from our point of view, this is what the plan called for, when you deviated it, is it our fault or your fault? Just talking, you know what I'm saying, so, again, you may get lucky and some of these may be able to stay, but that's a, that'd be a, that's a hell of a gift for you if that's what happens, but I, I, I am getting the sense that you could, you'd be prepared for the plan, so to speak, but, uh, did I capture that relatively well?
Yes.
Okay. September 5th?
September 5th, the only I'd say about that is that, in, before Mike, if Ronnie had stopped us from doing that, beginning, you can't go back to time, I understand that, but.
I, I can't answer that, and, and to me, it seems a little, I, I'm confused about, about that, but I can't speak to that. I, I don't know, like I said, I can only speak to.
What we have today.
Well, what the members signed off for, what Conservation signed off for, was a concrete wall. So what's not there? It's not, today's, there's not concrete, why it's not there, I don't know. The conversation that you and Ronnie had, I can't speak to, that's why I said, you know, let's go out, take a look. Hopefully, you know, something works to your advantage that you're not having to replace them all, but again, I definitely think certain ones of these are gonna have to get replaced and, replaced with concrete, that's the sense I'm getting anyhow. All right?
If any board member wants me, meet them out there to show them, I'd be more than happy, just let me know.
Same here also, if you go out, you want me to.
Driving the bus? You driving the bus that day?
You wanna get ahold of Mike, you wanna get ahold of me and I can meet somebody out there.
Yeah, I have no idea where I'm gonna be after, I'll, I'll go out and look at it before next meeting, so I have no idea where it's all, I mean, I. I mean, if, if they're far off the right of way, I'm not gonna worry about them anyways, to be totally honest, so I'll, I'll drive the road and take a look at it and see what we got.
And that's, to that point, if, from the road you can't visibly see them, that may work to your advantage, I don't know.
You can't.
Again, I don't, I, I, as I said to you, I don't know, and I can only speak, like I said, I'm, I'm capturing what I heard. So, my job is just to sit here and consolidate what I heard, all right? Thank you. Motion from Joe, seconded from John, to adjourn, any discussion on that, hearing none, all in favor, opposed, good night.